Good morning.
Good morning.
The time is now ten oh five. I will now call the meeting to order. Today is October the 2nd. The Planning Board meeting is now called order. We have the following board members with us today. Commissioner Washington.
Good morning.
Commissioner Geraldo.
Good morning.
And I am Chairman Barnes. We will now move forward with the business at hand. Please note that the deadline for all participation pre-registration for all submission of materials and exhibits was twelve noon on Tuesday before the Planning Board meeting. Staff is available today for onsite registration or if you require any assistance. Please note, beginning on October the 2nd today, the Planning Board meeting walk-in speakers, sign-ups will no longer be permitted, and we will now move on with the today's agenda. The order of cases for today's meeting is as follows. Items two, three, four, five, six, seven, and eight, and number nine will be withdrawn. The item on the agenda is item two, draft minutes of September 25th. We look for a motion.
Move approval, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
It's been properly moved and second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. The next item on the agenda is item three A, Legislative Updates and Approvals. We have staff member Ms. Gomez that will present.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Board. For the record, Natalia Gomez with the Planning Director's Office. Item three on the agenda is CB ninety-two twenty twenty-five, next slide. Yes, thank you. So this is a generalized bill timing for amendments to the subdivision regulations. Currently, we are in the second step where the Planning Board provide comments and recommendations to the County Council. Next slide, please. The purpose of the bill is to amend the subdivision regulations to facilitate the redevelopment of complex and strategically important sites within the zone to be established flagship project overlay zone through a streamlined and coordinated review process. This initiative is consistent and supported, is consistent with the county's executives' Elevate Prince George Initiative, which seeks to reduce regulatory burdens and encourage transformative private investments within the county. Next slide, please. Amendments presented in this bill include applications for approval of preliminary plan of subdivision within the flagship overlay project zone, and may be approved prior to the completion and approval of certain applications, including Stormwater Management Concept Plan and Concept Grading Erosion and Sediment Plan. Along with the application for the preliminary plan of subdivision, the applicant is also required to submit a flagship project mitigation agreement outlining the public facilities that will support the proposed development, whether provided directly by the applicant or in partnership with public agencies. Lastly, projects in the flagship project overlay zone will require the applicant to host a pre-application neighborhood meeting and make available illustrative site plans and details of the proposed flagship project mitigation agreement. Next slide, please. Next slide? Yes. The subdivision changes proposed in CB ninety-two twenty twenty-five are intended to align with the complement companion legislation that amends the zoning ordinance, or subtitle twenty-seven, which will formally establish the flagship project overlay zone and will set specific development standards. Currently, the companion bill is in the form of a legislative drafted request scheduled to be presented to the Planning Board on October sixteen twenty twenty-five. Given the difference in the legislative processes and timelines for amending subtitles twenty-seven and twenty-four, staff recommends CB ninety-two twenty twenty-five be held until subtitle twenty-seven is amended to officially create the flagship overlay project zone, as the final version of CB ninety-two should incorporate any necessary amendments to the companion legislation. Next slide, please. And finally, the planning department recommend the Planning Board to support LDR ninety-two twenty twenty-five and recommend that the County Council hold the bill so that it can be concurrently reviewed with the companion bill to amend the zoning ordinance. This concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Are there any questions from the Planning Board?
I have a question, Mr. Chairman. What would be the criteria for a project to have the flagship project overlay zone apply? Is there listed criteria anywhere that I may have missed?
The criteria will be, yeah, the criteria is drafted in the bill that will amend the zoning ordinance. I will bring it to you on October sixteen, but everything that stipulates on determining which project is eligible to be under the overlay zone, it will be codified in the zoning ordinance, not in this.
Can you give us just a sampling of what that criteria, because you're asking for us to support this now?
My apologies. For the record, James Hunt with the Planning Director's Office. What we're basically saying at this point in time, which is just to kind of hold this bill for right now, because they need to set the stage, because zoning sets the stage for everything. And so we're asking them to set this. So once we have that criteria, which will be identified under the zoning bill, so if they hold that.
No, I understand that, but the staff recommendation is to support the bill, so would we take no position on this bill and hold until October sixteenth? That's what I'm asking, because you're asking us to support something without having the benefit of the criteria.
So the recommendation is to support the bill right now and ask the County Council to hold the bill until the zoning bill is also...
That assumes we have no issues with what we're going to see on October sixteenth, is my point.
Absolutely. So if it indeed pleases the Board, they can oppose the bill or they can hold, either way. They can oppose the bill at this point in time pending the comment of, basically saying, you know, or no position, I'm sorry, to your point, no position at this point in time because you don't have enough details at this stage to be able to identify what that is. It's left up to the Board to make that determination.
I just think that would be the prudent way to go.
I concur. Yeah, we take no position.
Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we take no position on CB dash zero-nine-two dash two-zero-two-five, given the lack of detailed information necessary to support at this time.
Second.
It's been properly moved and second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. The next item on the agenda is item three C, Corporate Budget. Ms. Charles.
Terry Baco Charles, Corporate Budget Director. I'm before you this morning to share a preliminary budget estimates for FY twenty-seven. Thank you. Next slide, please. As noted here on this slide, I will first share our key trends, such as assessable base, tax revenue, and expenditure patterns, and then I'm going to provide estimates for certain operational drivers and its implications on the now under-development proposed FY twenty-seven budget. As you would well imagine, the FY twenty-seven budget will face the headwinds presented by unpredictable federal actions, such as yesterday's shutdown. We're facing rattled consumer sentiment, rising inflation, and the prospect that the economy may be decelerating. As a result, it has made forecasting the future state of the local economy particularly challenged, as expected revenues may suffer from a greater degree of volatility that could impact attainment of the levels anticipated. The state just recently, in its latest revenue forecast, wrote down current year revenue expectations, and similarly, the county will be anticipating slower revenue growth embracing from the risk presented by having seventy thousand residents employed by the federal government. Next slide, please. Now, this slide talks about what supports our spend. It depicts the continued strong growth in the foundational base of our main revenue contributor, property tax. As seen here, the projected growth in the assessable base for FY twenty-seven, it has not been markedly diminished when compared to FY twenty-six, and it is in alignment with Prince George's County's OMB's forecast at the moment, which projects a five-point-three percent increase compared to prior year's six-point-six percent. Next slide. But as you know, and as shown on this slide, the rubber hits the road, if you will, in terms of our actual tax receipt. And as shown here, here's the trend. And for the past two years, the three tax-supported funds, on average, have grown six percent, yielding between twenty and twenty-two million in new monies to support our operations. Next slide, please. This provides an expenditure trend, just showing what the trend has looked like in terms of what we have spent for our three funds. We can see that growth in ongoing actual spending is accelerating in each of our funds. The admin fund growth reflects progress in us filling critical vacancies and provisioning for the new ERP system, and both the park and rec fund trends have been impacted by growth in project charges. And I think it's also notable that the Recreation Fund also is including support of increased support for the CIP Pago program as well. Next slide. This slide is speaking to one of our largest expense categories, which of course is personnel. This chart shows that the budgeted total cost for the key personnel drivers, which in this, what is being captured here is health insurance, OPEB, retirement, and our markers for salary and re-class adjustments. And as you can see here, these costs have risen annually by more than two million, from nearly seventy-three million in FY twenty-five to what is projected for FY twenty-seven of just shy of seventy-eight million. Within this total, we can see, and that hopefully is coming through with showing kind of the trends within the drivers there, you can see that both health and retirement are consuming an increasing share of our personnel costs. Next slide, please. This slide is just again to have you, give you the opportunity to lay eyes on the growth in project charges. I think it speaks for itself, and we know that this is not sustainable moving forward. Next slide, please.
Ms. Charles, do you want questions as you go?
Oh, sure, sure.
Yeah, I'm just real curious about the doubling of project charges between twenty-five...
If you can go back to the...
Yeah, I mean, that's a huge jump.
That's a big jump.
Can you explain it?
Actually, there's a slide a little further in the deck that gives more of a breakdown of the increase we experienced in FY twenty-six, but the short answer is that the Council, this was not how we proposed our FY twenty-six budget, but this is how the process ended. What we proposed was a number in that fifteen million dollar range, which would have been similar to FY twenty-five. So we originally had anticipated flat funding, if you will, on project charges, and this is what, you know, came out of that process. And it's about sixteen, fifteen to sixteen million in project charges alone, and each one of our funds experienced growth of more than five million. And again, there is a slide a little bit later that speaks to the exact amounts.
Okay, thank you for that. And Mr. Chairman, if you would just indulge me, can you explain, because, and it was a flag for me, because I know this is not what we proposed to the county, and I understand that the Council approves our budget. Can you explain, I think for me, as well as maybe the public, how, what the budget process is like relative to the county? So we will come together, and I know at the end you're going to go through a timeline of what happens at which particular stage, and it goes to the County Council for approval, but can they just arbitrarily make changes to our budget without it coming back to us?
The process allows us to, of course, have input and respond in what we think would be the impact from their actions, if you will, but at the end of the day, they can...
Because I don't recall giving input on this particular doubling of project charges. And my question is primarily related to, because what follows this process is staff coming in over the course of the next several weeks to present their budgets, and so is it just an exercise and we're hoping for the best?
Utility?
Well, I think what you're speaking to is the opportunity that is being presented to us to engage in conversations earlier, especially in light of, I'm sure, your concerns with regard to the outlooks for the out-years and the burden that this is playing...
Absolutely, because it's unsustainable.
...as well. So I, what I will say, and again, the Chairman has clearly put this as top on his list for conversations with our partners in the county as it relates to the fiscal impact that this is playing. But, no, it happened quite quickly at the end, and it did, I would, now, recognizing that I'm a year and a half in, but I would say that it did happen with less conversations about what was being added, whether there was some other way to accomplish it. I think that there was not much conversation.
Let me just say it for you, Ms. Charles. It happened with zero conversation with the Board as a body. Mr. Chairman, I don't know to what extent you may or may not have been involved, but I just have some strong concerns about it, you know, in terms of transparency, and we are here as stewards of the citizens, and we need to be good fiscal stewards, and I'm a fiscal hawk, so...
Well, let me just say that I haven't even been here a hundred days yet, and this is one of the first things that I saw that was concerning for me. As I look at this report and then on this page, from two thousand twenty-two to two thousand twenty-five, I was not here. And we have grown to eighty-four-point-nine percent increase in project charges from eight million dollars to thirty, I mean, to fifteen million, to it has now ballooned in two thousand and twenty-five to thirty-two million dollars. My concern is that in two thousand twenty-six, FY twenty-seven budget, we will be at almost forty million dollars. We cannot sustain ourselves the way that we are operating. We have not had a rate increase since two thousand and sixteen, which means we are being fiscal responsible, to your point, and working with less to make things happen, but with these project charges, it is setting us behind every day. When you start looking at the programs and other services that we would like to provide, with thirty-two million dollars coming out of my budget, it is causing harm. We have not even gone through the personnel and the lack of personnels that I would be able to hire because of this impact. I think it is a cause of concern and an alarm. Once again, I'm looking at this report from two thousand and nine to two thousand and twelve. It was an increase of sixty-seven percent. I don't know what the hell is going on around here. This is concerning for me. So I think at the appropriate time, we, the Board, have a responsibility to sit down with the County Council and the County Executive to let our position known on exactly what's going on and how this is setting us back, simply because I am concerned about the trajectory in which we're going and the sustainability to where we are. By all accounts, from my conversation with Ms. Charles and her team, by two thousand twenty-nine, Commissioner Geraldo, we will be in a deficit. How in the world is park and planning in a deficit with the resources that we have, but at this rate that we're going, we are operating backwards versus moving forward? So Ms. Charles, I will allow you to continue on with your presentation, but just note for the record that this Board has some strong concerns when it comes to this item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I agree with you, especially since during the year in preparing for the budget, the Commission, we have the opportunity to comment and make changes, and then the changes that we make comes to the Council. What I'd like to know is, so where did the thirty-two million dollars go?
Where did it come from?
No, I know where it came from. It came from our budget, but where did it go? Is that money that the Council captured for itself?
So that there is available a list of the organizations and/or county agencies that were earmarked for those funds.
So I understand, so the public understands. So we had the budget set at one point, it went to the Council, what I would think would be a perfunctory review since we did the budget, and then they took thirty-two million dollars for themselves to distribute to who they wanted. Is that correct?
Yes, that would be correct. They directed very specific earmarks.
That's money that the Planning Board raises by itself to rich taxing authorities, is that right?
And in this instance, our original budget for FY twenty-six was in alignment with the expectation of ongoing revenues, if you will, with planned, planned and very transparent drawdowns of fund balance explicitly associated with our CIP and Pago programs. What happened in order to bring the budget in balance was there was a drawdown of more fund balance, and again, it's fund balance being drawn down not for our typical purposes, which is CIP and Pago support.
Because the concern was expressed by the Chair and by Ms. Washington is that that affects our building not only on the park side, but also on the planning side. Is that right? So that we do not have the funds that we had anticipated using to improve the planning department and the like. Is that right?
The impact in terms of the increased project charges did hit all three funds.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Charles. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes.
Okay, next slide. This next chart is in to just again reflect the pressure of the use of fund balance, and what you're seeing here is the preliminary unaudited FY twenty-five actuals. And so in FY twenty-five for the admin fund, we went into FY twenty-five thinking that we would have to draw down thirty million as a planned expenditure associated with a CIP project, if you will. And what we have, we expect when the books are completely closed is the fact that we did not have to use thirty, the thirty million that was planned, and that we are only meaning to draw down just about ten million. And again, that's far less than what was budgeted. Moving to the park fund and rec fund, you can see in both of those instances, it was expected that we would be using budgeted fund balance, but performance within the year suggests that we will be actually able to add to our reserves in both of those funds. But I do want to point out that the amount of being able to add or replenish that positive bar is on a trajectory downward.
Downward.
Downward and all. Next slide, please. Now, let's talk about FY twenty-seven, and what's shown here is what additional monies are expected to be generated when we use the OMB forecasted growth in assessable base. And again, you see that the admin fund is expected to have access to an additional four-point-seven, park fund just shy fourteen million, and then the rec fund, six-point-seven million. Next slide, please. This slide is just going to list off the internal cost pressures that I'm going to share, estimates that, of course, are impacting the base budget. Next slide.
Ms. Charles, if you can go back to the, one more, right there. So as I look at this slide, I need you to expound on this, because I am looking at the park fund of thirteen million and the Recreation Fund of six-point-seven and the admin of four-point-seven. At the rate that we're going right now, how are we going to be able to maintain those dollars?
So a little further in the slide deck, each fund has an outlook that hopefully will present a picture for you, and then there's another set of slides that shows a six-year look at it. But basically, for the, for, let me say it this way, both park and rec fund, right now, their base operations are operating at a deficit to the, what we get from the tax yield. The admin fund is the only fund at this point that our base operations fit within the flow of the new tax receipts coming in.
So if we're operating at a deficit in the park and rec fund, what is that dollar
You want me to fast forward to...
No, we'll wait. I mean, just, I'll make note to reference that again.
Okay. You'll know that I will circle back to it. It'll pop off the screen at you. Next slide. So now talking about our outlook for specifically FY twenty-seven and key cost drivers. So the first bit right here is our cost increase for our health and general insurance benefits for our actives. And as you can see here, the total cost for the county is going to increase year-over-year by one-point-three million to a total of thirty-one-point-six million. It's seven-point-two million in the admin fund, seventeen-point-four million in the park fund, and seven million in the rec fund. This is a four-point-one percent increase that we're budgeting through the departments, but as you've also been made aware of, because the consultants bring you up to speed with regard to kind of our health trends under the benefit plan, you know that the fund, the overall health fund is anticipated to experience a nine-point-three percent increase, just based on claims experience, and so the gap is being closed via the use of the general insurance fund reserve. So again, just pointing out where, you know, costs are increasing and we're using reserves, so at some point, it is going to present a greater pressure than what it's showing today. But right now, we still have the opportunity to moderate the increase between twenty-six and twenty-seven using the general insurance fund reserves. Next slide, please. This slide speaks to our costs associated with providing retiree medical benefits, and as shown here, the county contribution is going to be nearly twelve-point-four million, but the good news is that it's actually going to be lower in the aggregate by nearly seven-hundred-thousand. You see the specific changes anticipated for each of the funds. And the driver of being able to have this favorable outcome is really due to higher investment returns within the fund, lower-than-expected benefit payments, and receipt of higher-than-expected federal subsidies. So this clearly was a cost pressure in the last two to three years, so it's nice to be able to at least provide a little release here and all. So, next slide. So, next slide. Gives us the outlook on our retirement benefits, and again, the additional cost to maintain our retirement benefits. For the county, it is estimated to increase nearly 1.8 million to a total of 24.1 million. That does reflect an 8.3% increase in the employer contribution, and that's based on a preliminary estimate that was provided by the consultant in advance of the completion of the actual evaluation. But we worked hard to get this earlier estimate because many will recall that this is kind of a late item in terms of us getting a good, solid estimate, but we did ask our consultants to do earlier work so that we could better be prepared to show this in our base adjustments. Next slide, please. And this slide just provides the cost estimate for employee compensation. It includes the annualization of our FY26 adjustments and provisioning for FY27. And as you can see here, we're estimating that to be an additional 3.2 million year over year. Next slide. And this last slide here is related to CIP, operational impacts, and I will just point out that the debt service is going to be increasing by 4 million, and that's associated with the expectation that we're going to go to bond market for 79 million. And I also want to point out that in FY27 for the recreation fund, that 10 million that is placed right there is a reduction in what is in the current year. So in FY26, both the park fund and the rec fund are providing 20 million to go to the CIP Pago and support a CIP Pago program, if you will. We did anticipate reducing the rec fund to just provide a pressure release, and again, what we know is that operating deficit. So we are lowering the transfer to the capital projects.
Have there been any shift in our bond rating lately?
No. Thankfully, no.
Thankfully, correct.
This slide brings all of the pieces together in terms of some of the major cost changes that impact our base. As shown here, the admin fund minimally needs to increase by 1.5 million, which would be nearly a 2% increase over the current year. The park fund minimally needs to increase by basically 7.4 million, which would be a 3.2% increase over the current year. And the recreation fund, when we exclude the fact that we're downwardly adjusting our contribution to CIP support, would minimally need an increase of 1.1 million or roughly 1%. But remember, embedded in here are the project charges and that significant increase. So again, we will be looking to reallocate those funds to commission-driven purposes in FY27.
Mr. Chair, if I may. So under the recreation fund, is that a loss of almost 9 million?
And again, it's simply related to us not putting in 20 million, but dropping that down to 10 million, which gives that impression that it's less to operate. No, we're making a conscious decision to put less, which will, again, impact the CIP program's execution, but we're doing that to soften, if you will, that out year.
So for the benefit of the commissioners, with regards to the project charges, can we request that they would be identified so that the commissioners would know where the money went, that the council took?
They are identified. Yeah, she said she had a list. She could provide that.
Oh, you have a list? Okay. All right, thank you.
All right, next slide, please. So the next three slides are the individual look at each of the funds. I need for you to, on your hard copies, ignore the note in terms of the number there. It's reading what the budgetary reserve number would be estimated at. So there's no change. We are going to maintain our 5% budgetary reserve. It's just the calculation used on the slide, unfortunately, is incorrect. And every instance, it's more than what is represented there. But again, moving to the admin fund, as you well know, the departments are currently preparing their request for your review and approval. So what's represented here in the FY27 expenses simply reflects the baseline adjustments and past spending patterns. So it does not include the department's input on new enhancements or known commitments. So that's the nice way of saying this is budget people just applying past experience and inflating it. But I hope it provides the picture, again, of what I had said earlier, which is the revenue stream in the admin fund is strong enough to support what is our typical expenditure patterns. And this is the one place where you will see it. And so to the right is the display of fund reserves. So FY25, it is estimated that we ended that year with 64.8 million in reserves. If we continue to spend in the pattern that we normally spend, we will be able to add to fund balance in FY26. Now again, there's a lot of ifs in that, especially in line with the fact of where we started with. Will revenues attain to the level that we have budgeted for? I mean, we are very lucky as an organization to have a collection rate of 99%. Will that hold in this timeframe? We will soon know. But if that holds, and again, we continue to spend like we have been spending, we should or could, again, find ourselves adding to the fund balance like we did in FY... Well, FY25 came down, but we knew it was going to come down.
Well, Ms. Charles, dare do I say, we will not be able to hold it. Listen, the state of Maryland right now is in a $3 billion deficit. Prince George's County is in a 200-plus million deficit and growing every day. And with the shutdown that's affecting 70,000-plus people work or either contract for the federal government, it is going to have a huge impact on how we do business. And it's going to... The effect of the state in which the county looks for the state for revenue is going to have an impact on how we operate here at Park and Planning. I am concerned. The longer that this shutdown goes on, the more the deficit will increase and impact how we do business here. So I want it to be known and for the record that, you know, I am looking at all of these things, and I am concerned about how we move forward. The longer that this shutdown happens, and if it lasts longer than 30 days, we will have to start looking at mitigated risk around here. That's going to impact employee payroll, how we hire, who we hire, freeze on overtime, and I don't want to get to a point where we have to even start talking about laying people off. It is a huge concern, and the way that these project charges are hitting us, I am gravely concerned about how we do business. Coming in as the new chairman, I am looking at these things and looking at how we are projected to end fund balances does not give me any room to even be creative on doing any new projects or anything around here. So as we look at this budget projection, I am, once again, not to be redundant, but concerned of what the future holds. And I am concerned with the future hold simply because of the times that we're in and how we move forward. So I just want to make sure that we level set what these projections look like and we put in reality of what may or may not occur.
And you know that I will have the same sleepless nights as you, and I share in that concern. And again, this, as indicated, was based on if things were to continue as they had been. You know, the takeaway is this is the one fund that, you know, has the most flexibility at this point in time. Would be what I'll end and move to the next slide from. As you can see, this is the park fund. This is where, again, we're already stressed, as you're pointing out, and we're going to likely have to bear greater burden, which will further exacerbate these numbers that already show that we have some tough decisions ahead as to striking that right balance between our ongoing operations and our support of the also-approved and committed-to CIP and Pago program. And striking that balance is what drives that bar on the right, the expenditures.
Yeah, that's a $21 million difference from FY26 estimated compared to about, what, 6 million, 6.5 million? That's huge.
Yeah.
Huge.
And it doesn't get any better. Next slide.
Well, why not?
And that...
4 million.
And that is improved only in the sense that, again, it's showing us already pulling back our contribution to the CIP Pago program.
Right.
All right, and then moving forward, this is our admin fund with a six-year plan. Again, you see year-end fund balance being driven down and the bar steadily increasing. With regard to expenditures, and again, we are clearly going to outpace our revenue growth, our expenses.
And this is the most favorable fund.
Right.
Park fund. And then the next slide is our rec fund. Now, again, we all know when we're looking at our year forecast like this, that we take and budget each year as a year, and that there are both... That there are adjustments that can be made, both on the revenue side as well as the expense side. But clearly, we're looking at where we're going to have to make some concerted adjustments to both revenue and expenses moving forward, to bring the picture back into better alignment. And then I'll end on a happier note, which is just the work ahead of you. Listed here is a high-level view of the timeline, and as you know, it culminates with the commission approving the budget on December 17th and submitting it to the county executive and county council by January 15th. And I know that your calendars have already been marked for various work sessions, which are scheduled for October 16th, November 20th, and December 4th. That concludes my presentation today.
Are there any other questions for Ms. Charles?
No questions, Mr. Chairman, but I would just reemphasize Ms. Charles' comments with regards to the incremental scrutiny that we're going to have to have placed, or that should be our guidance with regards to the income as well as the expense side, and would also thank you and take you at your word that we will be entering into conversations with our partners on the council and others that may be as appropriate. That's because it was just a huge hit, and it came out of nowhere, just being frank.
Let me just say, once again, I am not even 100 days in. I am excited that on October the 18th is my 100 days. But as I look at this budget projection, I look at the challenges that we face, but at the same time, I look at opportunities. This is an opportunity now for us to have broader conversations with our counterparts to create more meaningful dialogue and understandings on how we need to do business. Park and Planning provides a great resource to this county. We are a vital part of the growth and mission of Prince George's County. We cannot continue to work in a vacuum, and we cannot continue to have the increases that we have been having. It is time that we have very frank and sometimes unapologetic conversations on how we move forward. Listen, I tell everyone that whenever listening to me, I'm not Peter Shapiro, I'm not Betty Hewlett, and I'm not Sam Parker, that I do things totally different. And as I look at this and I look at FY25 and FY26, I look at concerns that these conversations should have been had. And I look at where we are today and that we have an opportunity to forge new meaningful relationships and partnerships with a clear understanding of what our expectations are and how we should move forward. And moving forward is not just for the betterment of Park and Planning, but it is for the betterment of the residents of Prince George's County. To your point, Ms. Washington, we have a fiduciary responsibility, not only to ourselves and to the men and women of Park and Planning, but to the citizens of Prince George's County. And it is my job and my responsibility to make sure that I have those conversations in a way that everyone knows what's going on and how transparent that we possibly can be. Listen, it is a new day, and we will ensure that we move forward as methodical as we possibly can to ensure the integrity of this institution. That's my job. That's my commitment. So on this day, I want to say thank you so much for your presentation. I think it gave an eye-opening to us and to those in the audience of exactly where we are with this commission, because it is for some that thinks this commission has nothing but money. Money and resources that's just running overflowing. But I am glad that you painted a picture of reality so everyone could see exactly where we are in real time. So I thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Charles.
We will now move forward to the consent agenda. Consent agenda item is for A draft resolution cases heard on September 11. Is there... Is there anyone who wishes to oppose the staff recommendation on the consent agenda item? Is there any board member who wishes to discuss this? If not, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
After consideration of the record for item numbers, for item number for A, I move adoption of the staff findings and approval of the items on the consent agenda in accordance with the recommendation of staff.
Second?
Then properly moved. And second it, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Thank you so much. We will now move forward onto the regular agenda item. The first item is item number five, preliminary plan of subdivision 4-24038, Locust Hill, Phase 3.
Masav Etendos.
My favorite person.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and members of the board. For the record, my name is Masav Etendos with the subdivision section. Item number five on the agenda is a preliminary plan of subdivision 4-24038 titled Low Cost Hill, Phase 3. This preliminary plan proposes 161 lots and eight parcels for the development of 161 single-family attached dwelling units. The property is in the legacy comprehensive design zone, as is located on the north and south sides of Leland Road, within the Low Cost Hill subdivision, approximately 1.5 miles west of the intersection of Leland Road and US 301 Robert Crane Highway. This preliminary plan of subdivision is proposed as Phase 3 of the Low Cost Hill development, including Phase 3A and Phase 3B. including Phase 3A and Phase 3B. Could you please go to the slide eight, I believe? That would be the, the preliminary plan slide. Yes, this, the, the previous one, please. Yes, thank you. Uh, Phase Three is located in the southeast corner of Low Cost Hill overall development adjacent to the CSX Railroad Ryan. And Phase 3B is located on the north side of Leland Road in the northwest corner of the overall development. The total number of dwelling units approved for the overall Low Cost Hill development is 706 as permitted by the basic plan and conceptual design plan, of which 35% equals to 247 maybe single-family attached units. This 161 single-family attached lots in this phase, combined with the 50 single-family attached units approved in Phase One, are within the total number of attached units permitted by the approved basic plan and conceptual design plan. This subdivision proposal includes a request for variation from Section 24-128B7A of the prior subdivision regulations to allow some of the proposed townhouse lots to be served by alleys without having frontage on, and direct vehicular access to a public street, which is analyzed on pages 23 to 25 of the staff report. This requested lots will instead face onto open spaces. This application is also supported by an approved certificate of adequacy, ADQ-2024-072. As a matter of housekeeping, two additional items were submitted by the applicant prior to the Tuesday noon deadline on September 30th are interned into the record as applicants exhibit one and two. These exhibits contain resumes of the design and development team of the project. Can you go to the last slide, please? In conclusion, staff recommend that the planning board adopt the findings of the technical staff report and approved preliminary plan of subdivision 4-24038, Type 1-3 conservation plan, TCP 1-024-06-03, and variation from, from Section 24-128B7A, subject to the conditions in the technical staff report. This concludes staff's presentation, thank you.
Thank you so much. Are there any questions from the planning board?
No question.
Saying none, we will now hear from the applicant's attorney, Mr. Antonetti.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Members of the planning board, for the record, my name is Robert Antonetti.
Oh, I'm sorry. Before you get started, Mr. Antonetti, if you can get sworn in.
All persons who are intending on providing testimony in this item, can you please stand and raise your hand? Do you promise to, or affirm or swear that the testimony you're about to give is the truth and the whole truth?
I do.
The witness has been sworn in, Chair.
Thank you. You can continue.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, for the record, my name is Robert Antonetti with the law firm of Shipley and Horn. Very pleased to be here on behalf of the applicant, WBLH LLC, the longtime owner and developer of the Locust Hill project. Today with me, virtually, we have folks virtually and in person. We have Mr. Jeff Driscoll on behalf of the applicant, Mr. Mike German, development manager with Blue Mountain Development, Ms. Dawn Jorgensen, civil engineer with ESE, and Mr. Ryan Wingate, traffic engineer with Lenhart Traffic Consulting. I would like to thank Ms. Vatanous for her presentation, for her work on this case. She is one of the most pleasant people you'll ever come across in government, and it's a true pleasure to be able to work with her. She's highly communicative, and she really helps facilitate the review of these applications in a timely fashion. That's very much appreciated.
That's good to hear.
We also have Mr. Monroe Harrison and Jackie Brown with GS Procter and Associates, who help with community outreach. I couldn't help but think, as I heard the discussion about the budget, about projects and the impact of projects on the overall operation of the county and be able to meet the recreational needs of the county. Locust Hill, as you may recall, Mr. Chairman, you, within your first 100 days, you haven't been privy to a lot of the applications involved with this project. But it, it is a planned unit development that it was, was zoned in 2006 for such uses. And it's taken a long time to get to the point where we are today, where we're at the second preliminary plan to add density consistent with prior approvals. But part of those prior approvals involve the provision of significant public amenities. In terms of recreation, we're providing 10 acres of usable land from our overall usable land, 505 acres, and we're programming that and building a park with soccer fields, with a pavilion, with pickleball courts, with a large parking lot, which will be several million dollars just to build it, notwithstanding the cost of that land, which was donated or dedicated as part of the overall development. Additionally, this project, within its multiple phases, there's going to be three phases essentially for this project. The board has already approved an SDP that included many of the recreational amenities, the private amenities for the HOA. This is one of the most highly amenitized projects that will be coming forward in Prince George's County's history. It's going to have over $4 million of private amenities, recreational amenities, including a clubhouse with pools, tot lots, a central green, a community garden, trails, sidewalks, and miles of these throughout the community. So it's going to be really the kind of quality that I hope everybody can embrace. The overall project has a density of about 1.5 dwelling units per acre. 65% of the project's going to be single-family detached. What you have here today is a subdivision that will help realize a portion of the attached product that was contemplated in the prior approvals. Additionally, those have been down Leland Road. Leland Road is master-planned to be realigned as, as a major collector. And this project has significant frontage along Leland Road on both sides. It'll involve relocation, avoiding environmental features. This applicant has, has placed a $5 million bond to reconstruct Leland Road significantly to modern standards with sidewalks, a 10-foot side path, and shoulders, street trees, lighting, all, all of those things, really to bring it to a modern standard. So this project's not only going to be quality within, but it's also going to provide quality to the public beyond the four corners of this site. Today, as you heard, this is really, again, for 161 lots within the overall project. We look forward to coming back to you with an SDP for the architecture specific for these, these units. So you'll, again, see the continuation of that quality as it manifests itself in the final design for this Phase Three, which is where the, the subdivision impacts. With that, we do agree with staff's recommendations of findings and conditions. We greatly appreciate your time today in consideration of this application and support as we move forward. Our team is here to answer any questions that you may have, and thank you for your time.
Are there any questions from the planning board to Mr. Antonetti?
I have none, Mr. Chair.
And I see, I see none as signed up in opposition. Is there a recommendation, a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt the findings of staff and approve preliminary plan 4-24038, TCP 1-024-06-03, and variation from Section 24-128B7A, subject to the conditions outlined in staff's report.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well, thank you. The next item on the agenda is item six, detailed site plan DSP 15032-05, Prince George's Post Acute Care Facility. We will now hear from staff.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the planning board. For the record, I am David Meyer-Holz with the Urban Design Section. Item number six is detailed site plan DSP-15032-05, which requests approval of additional parking for an existing nursing home facility. In a September 17th memorandum to the planning board, the applicant submitted a request for a continuance of the planning board hearing from today, October 2nd, 2025, to October 23rd, 2025, to allow for further coordination between staff and the applicant regarding the requested variance. Additionally, the applicant submitted a waiver to the 70-day planning board action limit. Urban Design staff recommend that the planning board approve the continuance request and schedule this case for the October 23rd meeting. This concludes staff's presentation, and thank you very much.
Are there any questions from the planning board?
No.
Saying none, we will hear from the applicant's attorney, Mr. Antonetti again.
Good morning, again, Chairman Barnes. Members of the planning board, again, for the record, Robert Antonetti with the law firm of Shipley and Horn.
Do we have to swear a minute again?
No, Chair.
We, we agree with staff's recommendation. We thank you for your consideration of this short continuance, and we look forward to bringing this case forward to you at the appropriate time.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Antonetti?
No.
Saying none, there are no one in opposition. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the request to continue DSP-15032-05 to planning board hearing date of October 23rd, 2025.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it, and I vote aye as well, thank you. We will now move on to the next agenda item. Item number seven, preliminary plan of subdivision PPS 2023-006, Addison Overlook. We will now hear from staff.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Members of the board, for the record, I'm Salmeen Monohar with the subdivision section. Item number seven on the agenda is preliminary plan of subdivision PPS-2023-006, titled Addison Overlook. The subdivision proposes 32 lots, two parcels, and two outlots for the development of 130 single-family and two-family attached dwelling units. The property is in the residential, single-family attached and residential multifamily 20 zones and is located on the east side of Addison Road, approximately 700 feet north of its intersection with Ronald Road. The proposed development will be accessed via a proposed private street extending into the subdivision from Addison Road. The subdivision proposal includes requests for a variance for a spec, for specimen tree removal as evaluated on pages 27 through 31 of the staff report, and a variation from a standard lot depth requirement, which is analyzed on pages 34 through 36 of the staff report. This application is also supported by an approved certificate of adequacy, ADQ-2023-007. As a matter of housekeeping, the additional, the additional backup includes eight exhibits submitted by the applicant prior to Tuesday's noon deadline, and is entered into the record as applicants exhibit one through eight. Applicants exhibit one is, is a request for revision to two of the recommended conditions of approval that staff is in agreement with. The applicant's exhibits two through four are letters of support from Senator Joanne Benson, Belinda Queen Cunningham from Community Organization of Coalition of Center, of Center Prince George's County Civic Organizations, and Dr. Douglas E. Edwards. Applicants exhibits five through eight are resumes of the applicant's engineering, planning, and architecture teams that are present today as expert witnesses. The last exhibit was submitted by a resident prior to Tuesday's noon deadline and is entered as residence exhibit eight, which consists of a letter of support from Belinda Queen Cunningham. In conclusion, staff recommend that the planning board adopt the findings of the technical staff report and approval, and approved preliminary plan of subdivision, PPS-2023-006, Type 1-3 conservation plan, TCP 1-2025-0022, variance to Section 25-122B1G of, for removal of specimen trees, and variation to Section 24-4102C1 for lot depth requirements, subject to the conditions in the staff report as revised by applicant's exhibit one. This concludes staff presentation, presentation, thank you.
Great job. Are there any questions from the planning board?
I have none.
Saying none, we will now hear from the applicant's attorney, Mr. Horn.
Look at you prepared.
I'm ready, I'm ready.
Will all persons who intend on giving testimony on this item please raise your hand? Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth?
I do.
The witness has been sworn in, Chair.
Thank you very much. Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Members of the planning board, for the record, Arthur Horn, the law officer of Shipley and Horn in Largo, Maryland. Very pleased to be here today representing Woodside Land Investment LLC, whose ownership is with Dr. Charles Edwards and Mr. Patrick Ricker, who is here with us today. The civil engineers in this case are from Soltz, Mr. Ken Dunn, Mr. David Bickel, and Mr. Phil Isaiah, who are all with us here today. Traffic engineer in the case was from Lenhart Traffic, Mr. Dylan McAndrew. Mr. Chairman, the applicant agrees with the findings, the facts, and conclusions of law and the accompanying conditions with the two minor amendments to condition 1D in Tennessee, which are very technical in nature. We certainly thank Ms. Monohar and Ms. Gupta for helping us in this case. As we say, this was a request to redevelop 10 acres inside the Annabeltway property, not too far from the Addison Road metro site, and it brings in a combination of two-over-twos and townhouses totaling about 130 single-family and two-family units. As stated in your staff report, this is not the first time that there has been an application for approvals on this preliminary plan. There have been several preliminary plans and site plans on this property. It's a difficult property to develop, but it's extremely desirable based on its location and the need for housing in the community. The applicant here has a track history of being able to bring quality, single-family development throughout Prince George's County. And with their help of the community and with the support from the Park and Planning staff, they have accepted this challenge. As always, the applicant and his team has worked very closely with the community in collaborating manner and have done so for years in this project. The applicant, as pre, as you heard, they have three letters of support in the form of representative leadership in the area from the dynamic leader, Senator Joanne Benson, from the president of Coalition of Civic Associations, Ms. Belinda Queen, and from the Reverend Dr. Edwards, who is the president emeritus of that organization as well as the Mission of Love. After several meetings with these individuals and the civic associations associated with them, the applicant was pleased to revise his proposal through several iterations to make sure that the development was consistent with the desires of the community. The applicant greatly appreciates also the environmental section here in Park and Planning, who worked closely with them as they developed and acknowledged that they will continue to work with them through the DSP process to further address the woodland conservation regulations in creating this exciting infield development reg, implications. But the applicant respectfully requests the planning board to approve the preliminary plan of subdivision with the accompanying variations and variances along with applicant's exhibit number one. And we have with us, as I say, any, the applicant and the applicant's team to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Horn? I see no one in opposition. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt the findings of staff and approve preliminary plan PPS-2023-006, TCP 1-2025-0022, variation from Section 24-4102C1, and variance to Section 25-122B1G, subject to the conditions outlined in staff's report and is further modified by applicant exhibit number one.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it, and I vote aye as well. Thank you. We will now move on to the next agenda item, item number eight, countywide planning division, MRF 2024-009, Men's Transition Center. We will now hear from Mr. Ryan.
Could you turn your microphone on?
Good morning, Chairman Barnes and members of the board. For the record, this is Benjamin Ryan with the Special Projects Section. Before the board today is mandatory referral, MRF 2024-009, Men's Transition Center. This project proposes to demolish the current Men's Transition Center on-site and construct a new 28,000 gross square foot Men's Transition Center. The purpose of this project is to provide aid and support to participants on their path to participants on their path to permanent housing. Next slide, please. Project is located in Council District Seven, Planning Area 75A. The site falls within the established community's policy area. Next slide, please. Site vicinity map shows the site, which totals approximately 2.3 acres. The site fronts on Addison Road South along the eastern border and along Ernie Bank Street along its southern border. Not shown on the site vicinity map, the Addison Road seat pleasant metro station is approximately .25 miles north of the site. Next slide, please. The site is zoned RSF-65 residential, single-family. Next slide, please. The aerial map shows the site outlined in red. The existing transition center is located within the southwest portion of the site. The site was acquired by Prince George's County in 1969, and the site was permitted for construction and use as a group home in 1987. The residential areas surrounding the site, specifically the Addison Road South subdivision located directly south of the subject property, and the Brighton Place subdivision located west and southwest of the subject property, began construction in 2011. Next slide, please. The site is located within the lower Beaver Dam Creek watershed. Next slide, please. Slide shows the master plan right-of-way. The site is bound by Addison Road South to the east and Ernie Bank Street to the south. Staff would note that Prince George's County Bus Service has a stop along the site's frontage of Addison Road South. Next slide, please. As mentioned, this project proposes to demolish the current men's transition center and construct a new twenty-eight thousand gross square-foot dorm-style transition center with fifty-six bed capacity. Staff would note that capacity may be increased to seventy-six beds to account for freezing temperatures during winter months. A new vehicular access point is provided along Addison Road South. Additionally, the project will construct a new outdoor basketball court, new on-site pedestrian paths, and new site amenities, including bicycle parking, benches, tables, and planting areas. Next slide, please. Notification mailings were sent by staff on August 13th to all adjacent properties, registered community associations, and municipalities. Additionally, the applicant has conducted extensive community outreach for this project. On October 13th, 2023, a civic and homeowners focus group was held, which sought the opinions and recommendations of nearby residents and community members as to how the facility should look and how it would function within the community. On October 16th, 2023, a service providers focus group was held, which also discussed how the facility would function within the community. And on October 18th, 2023, a participant lived experience focus group was held, in which residents of the existing transition center commented on the site design and services they would like to see in the new facility. Lastly, the applicant held two community engagement meetings, the first on February 7th, 2024, and the second on April 24th, 2024. Door-to-door outreach was conducted within the immediate vicinity of the subject site, ensuring all community members had ample notice of the meetings. These meetings featured a presentation by the development team and the design team, a discussion related to site selection and the design of the site, as well as a question-and-answer session. Staff would also note that the applicant conducted a feasibility study in 2021 prior to the community outreach effort. This study evaluated four different locations, which includes the subject property. Although we did not receive the feasibility study in time to incorporate into the staff report, staff did review the study and concur with the findings. The feasibility study is included in the backup. The feasibility study utilized a summary matrix, which evaluated twenty-two different criteria for site selection, along with market and architectural analysis. The feasibility study supports the subject property as an appropriate location for the proposed development. Next slide, please. This slide shows an aerial view of the existing men's transition center. The facility is located in the southwest portion of the site. Next slide, please. The site plan shows the proposed project. Upon demolition of the current facility, the southwest portion of the site will be repurposed with a parking area and an outdoor basketball court. The new twenty-eight thousand gross square-foot transition center is located in the central, east-central portion of the site. A new pedestrian path is provided between the parking area and the facility. A new point of vehicle entry is also shown along Addison Road South on the eastern edge of the site. Next slide, please. This site rendering shows an aerial view of the site. Addison Road South is located on the left side of the image. Next slide, please. The site rendering shows the site from the western portion of Ernie Bank Street. Next slide, please. Site rendering shows the site from the east of the new facility, with Ernie Bank Street running north-south on the center of the image. Next slide, please. The site rendering shows the site from the rear of the facility. Ernie Bank Street is located between the new facility and the townhouse development. Next slide, please. The site rendering also shows the site from the rear of the new facility, with Addison Road South along the left side of the image. Next slide, please. This slide shows staff recommendations. Concurrent with the widening of Addison Road South, staff recommend relocating the existing sidewalk along the site's eastern frontage at least thirty feet west of its current location, per recommendations found within the subregion four master plan and sectional map amendment. Staff also recommend the applicant produce a wayfinding signage plan in coordination with the Prince George's County Department of Public Works and Transportation. Additional recommendations include coordination with the fire marshal related to emergency and service vehicle access to the site, coordination with road agencies related to the findings of the traffic impact study, clarification as to the location of bicycle lockers, and a revision to the tree canopy coverage schedule to indicate the zoning as RSF-65 and other minor adjustments. This concludes staff presentation.
Are there any questions for staff? Seeing none, we will now hear from the applicant's representatives. I believe Mr. Leo Daly and Janka. You are?
I'm John Kipatia.
Okay. You want to get sworn in?
Chair, this is an evidentiary hearing, so they do not need you to be sworn in.
Okay, good morning, board members, and thank you, Benjamin Ryan, for a great presentation and introduction to our project. I would just first add that for the staff recommendations, we fully support that, and we'll do everything we can to work with the county's regulations. And then, secondly, we want to just expand on the community outreach program and what we have been doing since multiple engagement efforts that we had hosted. We gathered a lot of feedback during those sessions, and we've incorporated a lot of features in our site and building design. If I were to give some specific examples around the feedback we gathered, we had heard from community that they wanted to limit traffic along Ernie Bank Street. As a result, as was presented in the plans, we've added a new entrance into the site, and we are indicating a limited exit only through Ernie Banks. We did conduct an extensive traffic study during the project, and we have recorded findings that showed that there wouldn't be a negative impact or increased traffic along Ernie Bank Street. We had heard from community that they would like to see the new facility moved further away from its current location, which is directly adjacent to the entrance through Ernie Banks. So we have moved the building as far as was possible while meeting the setback requirements for this zone. We also had heard concerns that the expanded facility is larger, so it will occupy a large area of the site. Again, through design, we've used the natural grade of the site and created a two-story building. With the grading, it does not become too tall, but it does not occupy a lot of space. So that was, again, another immediate reaction from feedback we were gathering. There was concern about security and pedestrian safety. There were conversations of adding a buffer along Ernie Bank Street, so the neighborhood community would feel more safe. We had talked during those engagement efforts what that buffer would be, whether it's fencing, its walls, or landscape. And during those discussions, we gathered that landscape buffer would be more complimentary and appropriate for the neighborhood where the site is. And we've also supplemented that with security cameras throughout the site. There would be twenty-four seven monitoring by staff. And then there were comments we were hearing about privacy for the residents and for the neighborhood residents. And again, through design, we've positioned public-facing programs like the medical unit and the entrance to the facility up front. All residential dormitories are positioned in a way that they are inward-facing. There are no direct sightlines or windows provided along Ernie Banks, but they are inward-facing. We have a coat yet that is actually contained with the building's own massing. So again, visibility into neighborhood homes is limited. So these are just some of the features I wanted to highlight. There are training and community fostering programs that are considered and built through the facility. As we mentioned, there's a medical unit that is created for the facility, and we are working with the county and the service providers to see how that would cater both the residents and the larger community. There are educational and training programs, such as vocational training, computer lab, library, that is all provided within this facility. We see that the residents would get the support they need to stand and go back on their feet. We do have a dining facility and kitchen that has direct access from Addison Road side, and it is designed with flexibility to offer teaching programs, and also expanded to county's larger programs with Capital Food Bank and community services. So I just wanted to highlight some of those features. We've heard and done our best to incorporate features into the design based on feedback we've received from the community.
Thank you. Are there any questions for?
Batia.
Batia.
No questions.
Seeing none, I know that there are several that are in opposition that would like to speak. As I call you up, please state your name and your residency. All will have two minutes to speak. We will start with Wellanita Smith. Is she online?
Hello, I'm here.
Yes, ma'am. You have two minutes.
Okay, so my name is Wellanita Smith. I'm a resident, and I live directly beside the men's shelter property currently located at 603 Addison Road. I'm here because, of course, I'm deeply concerned about the proposed expansion, basically a five-fold expansion that is less than fifty yards from my home. Our community is predominantly African-American, made up of hard-working, tax-paying families who just want to live in safety and in peace. And unfortunately, our concerns have not been addressed throughout this expansion process or planning process. We have asked several times about what additional safety measures that will be implemented to protect residents, and aside from some sort of protecting screen or gate, we haven't received any like real information on kind of how they're going to protect our family. Even at the current size of the shelter, we face continued serious challenges over the years. I've been there for about five years. I've never been contacted for any sort of real input. No one has come to my home, and I live less than half a football field away. I can walk outside of my deck, and I can walk right across the street to the shelter, and no one has contacted me about any input into this expansion. But anyway, even at its current size, we see littering, loitering, disturbed behavior, countless police calls. So the question is, how even at its current size, if they can't contain what's going on, how are we supposed to feel safe when it's a five-fold expansion? And this whole idea about this not being the best place in terms of safety, property values for homeowners in the area is not just a matter of perception, but there have been national studies done around this. They find that homeless shelters are often associated with higher rates of police calls and crime in the community.
Yes, Smith, your time is up. Is there a conclusion?
I want to ask that this planning board just take a pause, so that we can really truly do some sort of impact and feasibility analysis, and be able to regroup with our council members, so that we can be thoughtful about the community members and the unhoused population.
Thank you. Next is Bendale Green. Is he online? You on mute, Mr. Green? All right, we'll move on to Vanity Kennedy.
I'm sorry, did you call me, sir?
Your name?
Well, my name was Grant Gill.
No.
Okay, I'm sorry. I stepped away for a second. I heard Grant at the end, so sorry about that. Please begin.
Here's Kennedy. He's here. In person.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Ben Grees from Walker Mill Baptist Church and Walker Mill Development Corporation. My name is Van De Kennedy, and I'm in support of the Men's Transitional Center. I lived in the area since nineteen sixty-eight, okay? So, and also I support the center for quite some time. And my hope and prayer that it be the best in Prince George County. And I want to support it. I want to do everything that I possibly can to help out, and to do what I can for the men that are not only in Prince George County, but any way I can. I'm also here for another purpose. I have a project with...
Mr. Kennedy, I just need you to be able to speak on this particular issue.
Okay, okay. Thank you so much. And we want to do everything we can, and not only that, to do everything we can to work with the program, because we do have a garden down the street, Walker Mill Regional Park. And we have ten acres of land that we're working with down there, that we hoping and praying that we can work the men and... praying that we can work the men and back into the community in order to make it safe. Not only safe, but some of the men now has been deaconing my church. That was in the, that was actually homeless. And I see the transition that can be made and I will do all I can. After eighty-eight years, I'll do all I can to help out and to help this man transition.
Tracey.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
God bless you.
Next up is Ms. Mallory.
I'm sorry, I have a question. Do you have a question? My, my name's Grant Gill, identifying for the record on council for the, one of the HOAs and several members of the community. My understanding is that you said that people have two minutes to speak and the current rules of procedure in five point three state that people are limited to three minutes unless the board has a particular reason to limit the time limits to ensure group participation. But we are calling agenda number eight at eleven thirty-five AM. My understanding is we have maybe thirty people speaking in total. So I'd like to know why people are being limited to three minutes instead of, oh, sorry, two minutes instead of three.
I'll give them their three minutes.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Mallory. She's not online. That saved us three minutes. Uh, Ms. Wallace.
Hi. Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. Can you say your first name?
Yes, sir. Good day. My name is Christine Wallace and I live at six two two one Hallstead, which is about a quarter mile from the subject property. So I personally have longstanding concerns with how this facility has operated in the past, also how it can be expected to multiply those concerns if the expansion occurs as proposed. So there's already lack of resources, facilities in the area for us as residents. And that deficiency, as far as I'm concerned, will just carry over into the unhoused persons at this subject property. So when I first moved to this community in twenty fourteen, we at least had a grocery store, but that has since shut down. There's no my, there's no grocery access, there's no bank, no entry level job opportunities and no easily walkable access to any of these amenities. And because of the nature of facility, people who do come and stay there cannot simply be boxed up all day long and they don't really have any local amenities or job opportunities as a recourse. And so my concern is a lot of loitering and then independently, you know, they don't have vehicles to get them where they need to go. The other thing is based on the survey provided to us, the county was considering four possible sites for construction. And while I recognize that each of the four sites was said to have comparative downsides and upsides, it's clear to me that Site C was clearly a better location than the other four, on account of the minimal residential impacts, easy walking access to a variety of different types of commercial properties. Also, there are other pre-built onsite structures that would only require renovational, renovations and additional floor construction instead of full raise and rebuild over where we are at Addison and, and also to rebuild like at the Addison Metro site. Also, Site B had a pre-existing structure that can easily be renovated as well. Also, the cost of development is higher in our area. The onsite structure can still be built to accommodate and propose square footage to thirty-five or fifty-five thousand square foot site. So lastly, my concern is most of the neighbors are concerned about safety protocols. The project, we were not notified or reached out to for any input at all about this. And we work really hard. We are very concerned. And what I would ask is that if this can be paused to review of it so that we can meet with Brave Boy, Brave Boy and some of the other people in the community. Because we really don't think based on the assessment that we saw, this is the best site for this location and this expansion.
All right, thank you. We will now hear from Tatyana Mallory. Is she online?
They might need to be reminded they have to hit star six. I don't know if they're calling in or anything.
What about, uh, Tahika Mallory? Stephanie Evans?
I'm here.
Yes, ma'am.
Good afternoon. Again, my name is Stephanie Evans and I live at six one one Chance Place, which is directly across from the facility. My driveway is on Kenosha Way, which is adjacent to the driveway for the facility. So that puts me approximately five townhouses down from the facility. I am in opposition to a new twenty-eight thousand square foot facility. First, I want to stress the impact on the property values. Families and homeowners have invested heavily in this community with the understanding that it was originally zoned residential. I believe it was twenty twenty-two when it was changed to mixed use. But I don't believe the intent at that time would have been a facility this large. And it will inevitably affect the resale values of our home, discourage new buyers and just undermining the investment that all the current residents have made. Second, we've already seen how the current facility has functioned and that has been talked about on nice days, holidays, residents, they gather outside. It sometimes can seem somewhat manageable because it's small and I guess it can easily get police there. But obviously moving to something where you have seventy-six residents in one facility does not seem manageable to manage the congregating around the facility, the parking. And overall, it just doesn't, it's not positive for the neighborhood character. The scale that is proposed, proposed is just too large for that area. Also, as the previous person, person mentioned, it's not near any hospitals, medical facilities, grocery stores. These are all basic needs that transitional residents would need for their independence. A proper location for this facility should have those things if they want it to be safe and convenient access for them on a daily basis. And my final thing is that it just doesn't align, again, with the intended zoning and just switching it to mixed zoning and deciding you're going to put a twenty-eight thousand square foot facility there just doesn't seem feasible. And additionally, I just want to go back in terms of the safety. It was mentioned in terms of trees as a barrier that, that just simply isn't a sufficient barrier to provide any level of safety or separation from the, a facility of that size. So for all these reasons, particularly the property value, the strain on the neighborhood, the safety, I am in opposition and I am urging the board to deny the application.
Thank you so much. Roland Klein.
Ronald.
Arnold. I hear. Robin Hamilton.
Yes, hi. Good morning and thank you for taking the time to have us. We really appreciate this, but I too am a resident in the neighborhood and I am opposed to the expansion of the men's shelter for a number of reasons that our neighbors mentioned. First of all, this, this shelter is going to be quintupling in size. So we're talking about a current five thousand square foot structure to twenty-eight thousand. I do want to counter what Batia said earlier. She was talking about all of this community outreach and the last notice we received was April of twenty twenty-four. So I, as well as a number of people, did not receive notices. My husband is president of the HOA for the park at Addison, did not receive that. So that information is incorrect. Also, I want to mention what Will Amina, one of our neighbors said. I just want to reiterate, I live near her. I'm at six two two nine Wall Bridge Street. I wanted to add an attachment, but I do have a video that I'm more hap, more than happy to submit of a gentleman who was trying to get into our home, who was coming from, who was from the shelter. As one of my neighbors mentioned earlier, when the doors open at nine o'clock, a lot of the men, if they don't have employment, they do, you know, traverse the neighborhood. And one of them was trying to get in and that was captured on my Ring camera and I'm more than happy to submit that as well. Also, when the developer discussed resources, Batina mentioned it as well. I don't know if you noticed, but the bus stop on Addison Road, directly in front of where they want to expand the shelter, that bus stop has been eliminated. The county has closed that bus stop. So I want to mention that as well. So for that reason and many more, also on page ten of the display that the developer showed, that red outline of where the development is going to be, there's currently a bus stop there for children. So yeah, if you go, that's right. If you go back to, I believe it was page, yeah, this is fine. But if you see the outline right at the intersection of Ernie Banks there and Wall Bridge, there's a bus stop right there. And so there are children who are right there. And we're talking about this structure that is going to abut, you know, not only our property, but also where they stay. And finally, you opened up this meeting talking about budgets and how everybody is feeling a strain right now. And I just want to mention from the survey that we were given a couple of years ago, to have the site developed right here is going to be more expensive than the other sites that my neighbor Christine Wallace had mentioned as well. So it's going to be an added cost. So for that reason, I just believe this at the very least needs to be paused and we request that we have a pause and an opportunity to talk to the Brave Boy team to discuss this further. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Preston.
Preston Smith.
Preston.
Good morning, this is a. My mic went out.
Preston Smith. Preston Smith.
Can you, can you hear me? Can you hear me now?
Yes, Mr. Smith, go ahead.
Thank you, apologies. So my name is Preston Smith. I'm a resident at sixty-three oh five Wall Bridge Street. So I live very close to the proposed expansion. I am opposed to the expansion. I don't want to be duplicative of what a lot of my neighbors have said, but there's just a couple of quick points that I, I wanted to make. You know, there's just been a stunning lack of transparency in this entire thing. You know, there, there's been a lot of discussion about community outreach and I would just agree that there has been minimal community outreach at best to discuss this. And I think, you know, if you want to characterize the October thirteenth twenty-three meeting, I think Mr. Ryan said that there was extensive community outreach about how the facility would look and how it would function. Well, how about we talk about whether the facility should be there in the first place, right? This has just been done by edict and by decree and not with any kind of meaningful input from the community. And of course, when you have an email from twenty nineteen that says that this expansion is political and emergency, that kind of tells you how this whole project has been pursued the entire time. One of the things I wanted to flag is that, you know, in choosing to move to this neighborhood from Washington DC back in two thousand sixteen and seventeen, the one of the things I looked at was the Plan Twenty Thirty-five that was approved back in twenty fourteen. Because I wanted to see, you know, if I'm going to be investing all this money, you know, what are the plans for the community? And, you know, I was re-reviewing that in preparing for this meeting and I was just kind of struck by how this proposed expansion is so contrary to a number of the policies that are articulated in that plan. There is a policy twelve on page one thirty-eight that talks about being close to job centers for those who are disadvantaged. Well, this isn't close to any job center, nor is it close to any of the Prince George's County American Job Centers. There are six of them. None of them are proximate to this location. My neighbors have talked about there being no access to grocery stores, banks or any other things that people trying to transition back would need. I would, I would echo that. I'm fortunate enough to have a car. If you're at the shelter, probably not. This isn't close to any regional transit center. You know, this plan is replete with mentions of being transit oriented and having public facilities and public services be places where, you know, many people in the county can access them. And it kind of is confusing for this to not be proximate to a regional transit center, at least more closer to a metro. Now, I would just, you know, say in closing that it seems like, again, their, their site was chosen and then the county has tried to rejig a way to justify instead of taking a meaningful, thoughtful approach and determining where is the best site, both for the community and the people who would be using this. So I'm in opposition and I ask that this be paused and so we have, until we have a chance to meet with the Brave Boy administration. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Nancy. President. Say that, man. Help me out, guys.
Senti.
Percenti.
That's her. Nancy percenti. Michelle.
Esther Lee.
Michelle Esther Lee. She's on. She's on the.
Said she couldn't.
She's muted.
Unable to speak.
Michelle Esther Lee, you're on mute. It's muted. And we'll come back to our.
Michelle in the comments said she's unable to speak. She submitted her comments and questions in writing and she asked that the board pause a review of MRD two, two, twenty twenty-four oh oh nine and give us the time and opportunity to meet the county executive brave boy from Michelle Esther Lynn, six oh five wavelength.
Thank you. Mark Alzone.
That would be me. Mr. Chairman, thank you for the time. You know, I want to open with a lot of what my colleagues have said, which is I will publicly, I just want to ask county executive brave boy to meet with the neighborhood and I want to ask you Chairman Barnes and the planning board to facilitate that meeting. And I'd ask you to pause this project until that meeting takes place. I do believe that with collaboration, we can come to a better place than where we are now. We have not met with the Brave Boy administration yet. And so I think that's important. And Chairman Barnes, I know your reputation, you and I have interacted on many things having to do with HOAs when, from your time in the legislature. So I really appreciate your public service and everybody, all the planning board members' public service. I was, I'm former president of the Park at Addison Metro HOA in the county. Under the prior administration, we heard about all these, you know, community meetings that were held. Well, I can absolutely confirm as the former president of the HOA that those, there was not the outreach that we talked about. The only meeting that I received any notice of was that, I think, last one that was listed on April twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four. And by then they said, oh, we've already chosen the site by now. We're already past site selection. I was told that site selection was discussed at the February seventh, twenty twenty-four meeting and our HOA wasn't notified of it. I wasn't notified of it. None of the adjacent HOAs or neighborhood associations were invited, no residents of the area invited. And the meeting was held far from our neighborhood. When I asked the county, they, about the meeting, they said, oh, yeah, almost nobody showed up. We thought that was strange. And again, the focus groups, again, I was president of the HOA and I was not invited to, to any of these focus groups, which is very strange, right? I know why you should brave boy. I think she's going to be a great county executive. I can't imagine she'd want this to move forward without the voices of the neighborhood being heard. The study by Leeway Daily that a lot of other people talked about is deeply flawed. It's also old and outdated. The study was not released to us for years, even though we have numerous documented requests for the study in writing. Many of the businesses and nonprofits cited in the, cited in the study are out of business. For example, we all know this is a healthcare desert. We also know it's designated by USHHS is underserved. It's also a jobs desert, a food desert. It's not the right location for the shelter. If we truly care about the unhoused, we should locate the shelter in a place where the unhoused can thrive, should be located near a job center, near training centers, near healthcare facilities and adequate supermarkets. When this shelter was originally built, the neighborhoods were promised decades of When this shelter was originally built, the neighborhoods were promised decades ago that this was a temporary location for the shelter and a better location would be found. Everyone who's moved in since knew about this promise and we want the county to honor that promise. In closing, uh, uh, this area is not zoned for this. You can see it's adjacent to a residential neighborhood. The current facility is small, only five thousand square feet. It's being replaced by twenty-eight thousand square foot facility. Our one request was to not have a curb cut on Ernie Bank Street to have all traffic enter and exit on Addison Road, and that wasn't even honored. I appreciate the time. Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. And again, I ask you to, I really hope that you can facilitate this pause and step up and ask the county executive to meet with us. That way we can resolve this. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Ms.
Ayaka Mallory, who was called earlier. She's not online. Wanna you want to call her?
What's her name?
Ayaka Mallory.
Ayaka Mallory, are you there? You're on mute.
Good morning, I'm here.
Yes, ma'am. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Um, so I am also a resident, um, of the Park at Addison Metro Development. Um, and I'd just like to reiterate, um, a lot of what my neighbors, um, stated about, um, first of all, being in opposition of, um, the expansion of the Men's Transition Center in its current location. Um, I am in agreement that we do need, um, this amenity for our county residents, but the current location is not an appropriate location, um, due to the lack of resources that are, um, that we lack in our community or in this area. Um, so I, again, like everyone else, would like to ask the board to take a pause and allow, um, our community to reach out to, um, County Executive Ayesha Brave Boy. Um, and I'd also like to note that I submitted, um, written comments that I'd like you all to, um, acknowledge or at least read. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I only want to, uh, take a ten minute break and we will come back in ten minutes.
It is now twelve sixteen. I'm calling the meeting back to order. Uh, the next person, uh, to speak is Margaret White. Ms. White. No. Uh, Jason Benson.
I think he already, he already spoke. Um, Janelle Brown.
Uh, my phone was, I mean, my phone, my microphone was off. Uh, Margaret White. Ms. White, you have to unmute.
Now you may have to tell her how to unmute the phone.
All right.
Janelle Brown.
Chair, I'm trying to help her, uh, unmute herself. Give me just a moment.
All right.
I love connecting to her myself. She is trying to unmute herself, uh, so she'll identify herself if possible. Have a look, Mr. Klein.
All right, we'll, we'll come back, we'll come back to her. Uh, Jason Benson.
He already spoke.
He did.
Did Janelle Brown? That is next, I have.
Janelle Brown. All right. Uh, Jade Smith.
Is Janelle Brown going to speak or no?
Say again.
Janelle Brown.
Is that you? Yes, ma'am, come on up.
Greetings to everyone. My name is Janelle Brown. I am currently a resident at seven oh five Addison Road and the Acting President of the Park at Addison HOA. I rise in opposition not to the support of our community members experiencing homelessness or experiencing a transition in their lives, but in opposition to the methodology by which this process has taken place. Simply because of that, in my written testimony, I noted that many of us in this current climate are one paycheck away from needing the very services that we are discussing here. While this is a needed service in our community, there are better spaces as my community members have alluded to. Thus, we are respectfully requesting that the Planning Board pause the review of this MRF twenty twenty-four zero zero nine to give the community at large, the stakeholders that are directly impacted and Executive Brave Boys Administration the opportunity to meet, discuss potential opportunities and to do this in a way that brings the community into the fold with fidelity, uh, which has not taken place to date as discussed by some of my colleagues prior. Thank you for your time. I yield the rest.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Uh, Jade Smith. She's not online. Ms. White, are you able to? No. Uh, Ms. Smith.
She's on the phone, um, trying to unmute. Star, star six, I think.
Yes, Mr. Chair, if anybody's on the phone, uh, they can press star six to unmute.
Thank you. Ms. Smith or Ms. White? All right, uh, Grant Gill.
Officer, before I do, can I think, uh, do we have Mr. Klein to speak? He's available.
You tried to call him earlier and he was having difficulty, but he's able to speak now and he's currently on camera.
Mr., uh, Klein.
Yes, can you hear me?
I hear you well.
Okay, thank you, Chairman and members of the board. Um, my name is Ron Klein. I'm a psychologist, have been practicing in the field of forensic psychology for about fifty years. As you can tell by my gray hair and beard. Um, I am concerned about the homeless shelter. I've worked with, uh, men who have been homeless, women, sex offenders. I have been a forensic psychologist since the seventies. My major concern is safety and security of the neighborhood. Uh, beside what was said by all the other, uh, participants here. My major concern is safety and security. We have a lot of children in the neighborhood playing around. And if there isn't a careful screening of the men that go to the shelter, I'm concerned about their welfare and, and, uh, safety. Uh, and working with sex offenders over the years and criminal offenders and working with the Uthax in DC, uh, reporting to the court for twenty-five years. Uh, I know how things operate and I'm very concerned about safety and security in our neighborhood, especially with children here. So I want to thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak and I would hope that you would examine that carefully. Because if anybody were violated because of those, the shelter and anybody who is residing there, I'm sure there'd be a lot of litigation on that issue. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. Uh, Grant Gill.
Uh, thank you, sir. Uh, also before I begin, I'll note that I reached out to a, uh, some of the other people you couldn't, uh, get earlier. I have been able to speak with them. They're still on technical issues. Hopefully they manage to get in here by the end of it. Uh, so I will also note for the rules of procedure that I am representative of multiple people here as well as speech away. Uh, the, um, Park at Addison Metro, uh, and I'm entitled to five minutes to speak, not three.
Please grant, uh, Mr. Gill, five minutes.
I get it. My name is Grant Amadeus Gill from the Law. This is G. Mason Nelson, speaking today in opposition to MRF twenty twenty-four zero zero nine on behalf of a number of concerned citizens in the Park at Addison Metro Homeowners Association. All of whom are located within the Addison Metro neighborhood surrounding six oh three Addison Road, AKA the subject property. I have submitted a letter to the board providing a broader degree of commentary that will not otherwise fit into a five minute speech. And it is labeled as Exhibit A with my sign up. I would urge this board to consider it alongside my spoken testimony today. We've spoken in opposition to this development for a long time. And while minor changes were made from last time before, it was before the board to the present that attempted to resolve a few concerns, particularly with regard to access points. The full scope of the project is still contrary to the needs of the hundreds of nearby inhabitants. After our strong urging to have proper site selection review, we received a study late from Delta identifying four sites, A, B, C, and D, D being the subject property. Despite the study's deficiencies and law, odd classification metrics, we believe that it was clear that even, uh, sites B and C, even then that site B and C were superior options for a variety of reasons. Namely that they had better existing infrastructure, far more walkability and job opportunities for the shelter residents, far less impact both in terms of total volume and comparative distance to residential properties, more access to public transit and more access to local amenities for shelter residents. Amenities that, by the way, were not only not readily available as subject property for the shelter residents, but are also not available to the homeowners and renters in the immediate vicinity because this community is a low income region with sparse development and no local food slash grocery hub. It used to have one, but that time has passed. And shoehorning the development in here on a parcel that could otherwise be used for something that benefits hundreds of households is contrary to proper land planning and detrimental to the inhabitants of Addison Metro. And is doubly contrary on account of there being readily identified alternatives that would in no way prejudice the shelter residents and would indeed assist them with rebuilding their own lives at a lower cost of development to boot. And it would finally release the subject property from a supposedly temporary obligation that it has sheltered for decades. This area already has multiple homeless shelters. What it needs is jobs, both for shelter residents and the many neighbors who might well become shelter residents themselves if they do not receive proper government investment to their community, particularly on account of acute federal government instability and the consequential job market uncertainty throughout Prince George's County. This project ignores problems of the area to the detriment of all involved and for no other apparent reason than inertia. My clients have spoken and will speak to their particular concerns with the history of the project, safety issues and other impacts that they deal with on a day to day basis. I incorporate all of their concerns, but my time is limited and I don't wish to repeat them. What I will instead say is that this area is zoned for a reason. And just because the county government attests that it is not bound to the zoning ordinance does not mean that it should ignore the zoning ordinance. The development is spatially contrary to most purposes of the RSF sixty-five zone and to the underlying master plan that calls for mixed use commercial development in this specific area to facilitate residential growth. On one hand, the county appears to posit that it has to place the facility under subject property because the study matrix identifies that this parcel has better setback compliance. While on the other hand, it suggests that the zoning ordinance doesn't matter at all to it. Which is it? Should the county not be inclined to move with the flow of land use development that it has sought it to draw in painstaking detail for everyone else within its borders? Should the Planning Board rubber stamp development that is contrary to the zone, to the master plan, to the ordinance and to the will of the area's many impassioned citizens simply because it thinks it has no authority to deny that development? Even if that is the Planning Board's belief that mandatory referral confers upon it no enforcement rights, that does not mean that it needs to verbalize dissent. Indeed, if its decision changes nothing, why not stand with the people and recommend disapproval anyway? If the county council wants to overrule that recommendation, then it can do so in its own time. For now, the Planning Board has an option and opportunity that will, uh, to use its influence as best it can and redirect development of this shelter to an area that will cause fewer negative externalities to neighboring properties and benefit the shelter's residents. It should consider the written communications that I have attached as Exhibits B, C, and D, and it should consider the testimony of many people in opposition. It should, if feasible, pause hearings pending our discussion with the county executive as most of the prior discussions about this project were during CEX Alderbrooks's tenure and CEX Brave Boy has not yet had the opportunity to meet with the community about it. And in the end, the Planning Board should vote to disapprove of MRF twenty twenty-four zero zero nine and instead recommend relocation of Site B and C or more appropriately, request an updated twenty twenty-five study with better methodology. Thank you for giving me and my clients the opportunity to speak today.
Thank you, Mr. Gill. Uh, next is Belinda Queen.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Dear Chairman Barnes and a member of the Prince George's County Planning Board, my name is Belinda Queen Cunningham and I serve as the President of the Coalition of Central Prince George's County Community Organization, Consonant of a Co-Guard, a Civic Association, HOA is a community organization. I live at nine oh six Kern Boulevard, which is the Wilbourn Community, directly across the street from the current shelter. Been here since nineteen eighty. Our organization has officially voted no on expansion of men's shelter at least five times. The last vote was taken Saturday, September twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five. We have voted several times and the answer is still no. However, let it be fully understood, the coalition is in favor of the renovating of the little building that is there now because it does need to be burnt, brought into the twenty-first century, but not the expansion of a shelter. After all, the shelter was initially built as a temporary facility for men and boys twelve years of age and older since they were not allowed to be housed at Shepherd Cove back in the day with the women. We have made numerous recommendations for where the shelter would be better served as already stated by several residents. For access to jobs, metro station for walking, the coalition believes that the location of shelter and these locations with similar amenities would be ideal for bigger men's shelter where fewer houses are located. Homeless individuals are not necessarily to blame for the conditions, but neither are the communities where the expansion, five times larger is of the current location is being suggested to be built. Many of these homeless individuals lately have been coming over from the District of Columbia because our president has ordered to move a lot of their beds. Um, and it's really not fair to our community. It's about thirty-five thousand to care for a homeless person, so it makes more sense to employ some of them. They're not in my backyard. NIMBY is often used when the topic is presented. However, the residents who live in two oh seven four three has more share of fair, low income minded homeless shelters. And we are saying enough is enough. Would you want a bigger shelter for the homeless strangers close to your house or your children or your school or your park? And as you can see, I'm sitting on my deck or walk into your community, mental people, it is not fair. If we are trying to elevate Prince George's County, let's start with elevating two oh seven four three. In closing, the coalition does not want the county to expand the men's shelter, but we do support the building of the smaller shelter and repaying the one that is there. I am the coal, I am the coalition and respect me as that you vote no to the expansion of this men's shelter. Thank you for your time and consideration. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Queen. Karen Gillison.
Yes, I'm here.
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Karen Gillison, I am a resident and a board member of the Park at Addison. I live directly adjacent to the proposed site at six oh three Addison Road South, which is just a hundred and seventy-one feet from my home at six oh two Chance Place. While I fully support transitional housing and services for individuals in need, this site is not an appropriate or safe location for a twenty-eight thousand square foot men's shelter. First, planning concerns. The county's own survey identified more suitable sites that offer lower development costs, better access to jobs and amenities, and less impact on residential neighborhoods. Moving forward here disregards that data-driven process. Second, the safety and access. The surrounding streets cannot handle the traffic, emergency responses, challenges or pedestrian risk this facility would bring. Its close proximity to the hundreds of homes raises further safety concerns for both the residents and future occupants. Third, the lack of resources. As a licensed professional counselor and a certified rehabilitation counselor, I know that successful transition requires workforce development, substance abuse treatment, and healthcare supports. These resources are not accessible in the immediate area as previous folks have mentioned during this planning meeting, limiting the shelter's effectiveness and the well-being of its residents. Finally, the community impact. The scale of this facility is disproportionate to the residential nature of our neighborhood. It will undermine community stability, increase quality of life concerns, and reduce residents' sense of safety. I also want to note that despite the claims of outreach, I who live directly beside the property never received notice or invitation to any community meetings. For these reasons, I respectfully urge the planning commission and county council to reconsider this site and focus instead on the alternative locations identified in your own planning survey. I also request a pause and review so residents can meet directly with the county executive, Ms. Aisha Brave Boy. Thank you for your time and your commitment to ensuring the transitional housing is both effective and thoughtful, thoughtfully integrated into our community.
Thank you. Anna Grant.
Good afternoon, I am Annie Grant with Leeway Daily. We are the design team for the transitional housing project. My colleague, Jonkey Batia, spoke earlier about some of the amenities that we have provided in consultation with the community and I would just like to reiterate a few of them that have come up through the course of the conversation and offer a few points of clarification. The current facility, as it exists on the site and it has existed there since the eighties, houses approximately thirty-six residents. So that's the number of beds that we're currently able to accommodate in five thousand square feet. What does not accommodate are the services that everybody acknowledges are necessary for transitional housing. So healthcare, workforce training, sufficient support for food and nurturing. The expansion that's described is actually not an increase, a five-fold increase in the number of residents. It is in fact twenty additional residents that will be accommodated. But we are providing onsite healthcare services through a health clinic. We are providing onsite workforce training through a dedicated vocational training space and we are providing onsite amenities to make sure that the residents are fed and clothed and housed. So we would just like to offer that point of clarification. We are also seeking to reinforce the idea that this is compliant with the residential zoning of the current lot. There is no revision or amendment to the current zoning and transitional housing is compliant with residential use. So with all of this information, we have met multiple times with community members and we see familiar faces on the call and we have done our very best to implement all of the strategies and recommendations that have been discussed. We've had lengthy discussions about security and how the appropriate treatment for security in a residential neighborhood might be implemented on the site. For example, we did present potential options between fencing, hard walls and planting and in collaboration with the community members who were able to communicate and participate with us, we came to the consensus that a planted border is more in keeping with the residential neighbor, nature of this neighborhood. So we've done as much as possible as a design team to implement the strategies that the community has asked us to, including the addition of an entrance off Addison Road in compliance with the address of the building at six oh three Addison Road. And we've worked with the county and all of the agencies associated with this project to implement all of the recommendations to ensure that this is a valuable contribution to the neighborhood and improves property values over the current dilapidated facility that is there. So we continue to support those initiatives and we follow up and follow up on the staff recommendations. We will do our best as a design team. We concur with those recommendations and will implement them as required. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
How, in the context of your out, of the outreach you all undertook, how many residents did you all meet with?
So over the course of the engagements, the first, the initial phase were focus groups that were conducted with OCR and with the Office of Community Relations for Prince George's County. During each of those meetings, we had a range of, I would say, five to twenty people attend. So we had four focus groups, this is before design even started. And the intent of these conversations was to hear about the needs in terms of how the community wanted the facility to look in terms of services that they thought were important to be included in the program.
Were the focus group participants sourced from that, from the local community?
Correct, we collaborated with the Office of Community Relations. They have databases of community organizations and partners and faith-based groups that they reached out to and invited them to sit down conversations with us. Beyond that, the design team had an independent community engagement specialist who was the kind of entity that went around door-to-door with flyers and you can see that documented in our report. We showed that we created flyers that were distributed individually to each house in the neighborhood. So we have documentation of that, that's included in the report, that's an amendment to the backup of this here. So we had a community engagement consultant, as a consultant to the design team who assisted us with the outreach meetings and we had a series of three. Once we started design, again, the initial one was a listening session to hear from the immediate community about needs. The second one, we presented design alternatives for the site. And in that, that was a very informative session. We heard kind of the need to push the building further from Ernie Banks, which is something we implemented. We heard kind of no, no contest, no hands down, an entrance from Addison Road was necessary. And as a design team, we worked to accommodate both of those things, which quite frankly are in conflict, right? Adding an entrance road on the north of the side and moving the building north, we had to kind of find the middle ground. But we were able to achieve that with the current design and we think that we have responded very definitively to the feedback community. And the third, we presented the final options and we still got some feedback on kind of the need for the pedestrian treatment of Ernie Banks, which is something that was implemented before it was presented to the committee here.
I may have more questions later, but I'm just, it's really strange that we've got twenty-plus people communicating to us today that they have not heard from anyone. And they live across the street.
I find it strange too because I see familiar faces in that group. So I have no other kind of point of contact with this community apart from this project. So I do understand that they may not have attended all of the community engagement opportunities, but I think that was the rationale for us having multiple, so that we would have opportunities to engage.
Thank you, Ms. Queen.
Oh, I just have a few questions. So currently, there's thirty-six beds or thirty, and this facility is much larger. But I understand it's going to be more holistic than the existing one, is that right? So how many, how many beds do you expect on this new facility if it goes forward?
Fifty-six beds would be provided in dorm units.
You're talking about twenty more people?
Correct, there is, in the case of winter emergencies where there are needs to expand, there is a, there is a unit where we can house twenty people temporarily in cots for hypothermia.
And I also find it strange that we have so many people here today opposing it and your group says that you reached out to the community. So I'm trying to figure out what's the disconnect there. How, one hand, you participated, at least you claim to have with the community and I have no reason to doubt you. But on the other hand, we have several community members who are here saying that they were unaware of, of what happened. Although I was, I was reading some of the backup and it seems that there were meetings previously in the old administration and that you met with people from the old administration.
Correct, we provided as backup in the most recent package documentation of our community outreach that shows images of people participating with the design team at these community engagements. It also includes a list of people who signed up and registered for these events. So to the, and I understand that you're taking one person's word against the other, but we do provide supporting documentation that there was community outreach.
Okay, thank you, I have no further questions, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, I just had more of a statement. You know, as I sit here and I, I listen to this case and the people that have come online and in person to speak in opposition. This just gives me great pause on where we are at this particular time. And one of the things, I'm not sure if you ever looked back at some of the video of prior cases that I have been able to chair. And one of the things that I tell every land use attorney or anyone that comes before me is that you have to do a better job of reaching out to the community. Because when there's twenty-plus people in opposition of something means you did not do a good job of either selling or telling your story, them involved in the process. Simply because of the number of people that are, have major complaints concerns me. And I just got here like most that did not have an opportunity to sit down and hear your presentation and what you're trying to do, that we have to look at where we are in this date and time. What also concerns me is that most of the people that came on here spoke about the safety measures and people that were straying in neighborhoods and coming to people's doors and other concerns of people at bus stops and children. That's a major concern for me. As we look at how we are to elevate and amplify what we're doing in a real methodical way that I would hope that you all are taking very seriously. And part of where I am at this juncture is that as a planning board is to make real informed and intelligent decisions on what we're to do and how we move. And most of the things that I heard from the community was one real simple ask and that was, would you all be considering to hold the project and have further dialogue? And that's holding the project that they wanted to ensure that the Brave Boy administration had an opportunity to hear what you all were doing and are you all willing to see? So my asks of you are, are you all willing to listen to the community and pause things as, to get more feedback and get the Brave Boy administration an opportunity to hear what you all are doing?
As a contractor to the county, I, I am not in a position to kind of proceed with that recommendation. I will have to go on the advice of our time.
Thank you.
Is anyone here authorized to make that decision?
There's no.
Give me Chairman.
Mr. Chair, for the record, James Hunt with the Planning Director's Office. If it pleases the board and they would like to do so, we could take a brief break and allow them to ask, you know, kind of reach back out to their team and then we can come back for that question.
Do you all like to take that break? Thank you. We're taking a ten-minute break. We'll call the meeting back to order and I will ask for Ms. Grant to come back up with her statement.
We appreciate the opportunity to consult with the county on next steps here and the recommendation that we have come back with is that the staff recommendations include a condition that we brief the county executive Brave Boy before commencement.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for Ms. Grant?
Yep, so we're, you're, we're going to add an additional recommendation, right? And staff is good, okay.
Saying that there are no additional questions, that concludes the hearing on this. Say again.
Has everyone had an opportunity to speak?
Has everyone had an opportunity to speak or was there anyone that I left off the list?
Mr. Barnes, if you could read through the people who weren't available earlier, we've tried to get them on. I don't know if they're on or not, but I'd like their name to be read a second time just in case we're able to speak. Particularly Ms. White, Ms., give me a moment. Margaret White was one of them. We had a second one here, give me a moment to pull her names up. Jade Sims was a second and a third was. Priscilla, Priscilla. I'll talk to Yana Mallory, had to leave, but she submitted written comments, so she's good. But I, I think the other three still are waiting to speak, I don't know if they're available or not, but.
Sure, so I will go down the list once again.
A couple of the names mentioned, I'm not sure that they signed up ahead of time, can you confirm that?
I understand, so Margaret White. It's White, you're on mute. Last one, Jade Smith.
Yes, testing, can you all hear me?
I hear you now.
Okay, thank you so much, I know we're wrapping up, so thank you guys for the time. Just wanted to share a personal experience, I lived down the street from the shelter, decided to take a walk one day, my dog started to bark uncontrollably as it does and I looked over and there are trees that separate the shelter from our neighborhood and there was a man camped out in those trees. And that's just not acceptable to me, I immediately turned around, went back home, told my husband what happened and then I did not walk the dog for about two or three days after that until I could verify that he was no longer there. These are the type of the concerns that we have with the close proximity of this building. These are the type of the concerns that we have with the close proximity of this building to a neighborhood. It's not that we don't understand that services aren't needed or the building in this place isn't needed, but when you're talking about close proximity to a neighborhood, these are the things that concern us as immediate neighbors who live nearby. So I just wanted to say that and put that on the record and share that with you all today. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Margaret White. I believe that concludes all of those that were asked to speak and available to speak. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, can I ask Ms. Grant if you would? I just have a clarifying question for you, please. So the recommendation, and maybe this is to our staff as well. You said the additional recommendation has, suggests that you all, the applicant will be meeting with the county executive before the project moves forward?
Before commencement of the construction, correct.
Okay, but you still are requiring action on that today. Could you all just proffer that you're going to do that?
Believe so, yes.
Did we not take action on this? This was told, this was. Right.
Till next time.
Correct.
Mr. Chairman, Ms. White is on my phone and she wants to speak. She says she don't know why she can't unmute, but I can let her speak through the phone. Go ahead, Ms. White.
Sorry, Ms. Grant, we'll.
Ms. White, go ahead.
Okay. My name is Margaret White. I've been in the area since nineteen sixty-eight. In this area, I do oppose this transition center being remodeled, rebuilt, due to the fact there are four schools close by within walking distance. There are young families with children and new real estate all around this particular site. There are retired homeowners who want to stay at their home as they get older. There are no jobs or work in this area. Okay, my suggestion is let the, we, we entered people, let them do their time. If they return to the community, require that they get, while they're in jail, that they get their GED while serving time. Also require that they take a vocation class, a program. And, and also let the county pay into a job that they can come out and will have one year of apprenticeship. Let them earn their way. And this would give them respect for the community and for themselves. Also, the reason I said this is that there are many, many beautiful acres of land outside the Beltway with good transportation. Inside the Beltway is established and we are in like our fast, we are, we are full of fast food stores, liquor stores, storage centers, Royal Farms and Dollar Stores. We have no major food store.
Ms. White, your, your three minutes are up.
Okay, your time is done. So can you just conclude?
Three minutes.
Your time is up. Just conclude. Say your last statement.
Okay. My last statement is either build this center out on Church Road so that they'll get an idea of what it's like to work and, and have a beautiful home and be a taxpaying member of the community. I said no to it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Once again, Ms. Grant.
Yes, I just, I'm trying to clarify what your intent, because you, you said you would meet with the county executive before undertaking any action, correct?
For construction, correct. We're recommending that it becomes an addition to the staff recommendations that we are also.
So you're not withdrawing or you're not?
No, we're not withdrawing or pausing. We are asking that it be added to the staff recommendations. Briefing with Brave Boy.
Okay, and so the condition, and I, and I'm looking both ways because I know that you've been in consultation with our staff. So the recommendation is that the applicant will meet with the county executive and, and reach a consensus to move forward before construction takes place?
Correct. We will consult with county executive for her take on commencing this project. And she will have the, the authority to consult with the community through whatever means are appropriate.
Okay.
So do we need any action today?
Yes.
We need action.
That doesn't give us any right to, to meeting with the county executive though.
It doesn't preclude you from meeting with her either.
True, but we'd ask, I don't see the harm in the pause, you know, so that way, you know, nobody wins, nobody loses.
Well, our, our, our council can speak more clearly to this, but as a matter of law, if the board does not, the only way there can be a pause is if the applicant
agrees.
Agrees, not only, not agrees to it, but decides they want a pause. By law, this board cannot mandate a pause. So if we do not take some action, then it will just go through as presented.
So county executive Brave Boy won't agree to the pause? I find that hard to believe.
It's not, it's not the county executive.
Commission of Washington, I'll, I'll, I'll try to explain it. This is, for the record, this is Delisa Coleman, Senior Counsel. The review of public projects, which is known here as an mandatory referral process, is based on state law. And that's located as sections twenty dash three oh one through twenty dash three oh five of the Maryland Land Use Article. And while I understand there have been multiple requests for the planning board to pause its review of this application to allow the citizens to engage with the county executive and other county officials, this is simply not within the planning board's power. State law requires that unless the submitting entity, which is here, the county's Department of Homeless Services, I believe, unless the submitting entity provides additional time, the planning board must act on the submission within sixty days of receipt of the application or that application will be deemed approved. So without the benefit of any type of, of comments or recommendations on the part of the planning board. So as a result, the planning board does not have the power to pause its review of the application. I also want to make you aware that simply by disapproving this, the submitting agency could then overrule any disapproval of the board and proceed with the project as they proposed it. So in essence, in that course of action, it would allow the project to proceed without any conditions and recommendations that the planning board would want to see implemented or that the public may want to see implemented.
But.
So will.
But the recommendations.
Let, let, let me, let me also clarify that at the end of the day, I always want to ensure that the public voices are heard. And I think we did that today. I want to thank Ms. Grant and her team for hearing the community and hearing the planning board with adding that additional concern of allowing this process to have the county executive to weigh in. That is a win for you guys. And I think if we take that and let the, this project and the county executive sit down and hash things out, then hopefully it will become a win for all involved. This does not preclude the community to also weigh in with the county executive. I think now, I always use the analogy of basketball because I play. I am now passing the ball over to the county executive and her team to weigh in on this project. And the community can now have those conversations with her. This will come back to the planning board for final approval. So once that comes back, no, this is it. So once you all have those conversations, that you all will determine how this project will move forward. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the recommendations of staff in addition to the applicant proffered condition with, with respect to a meeting with the county executive before construction begins. And I would ask staff to work with council to ensure that the recommendation is consistent with your discussions. And with that, approve the transmittal of the site location and the project and the transmittal to the Prince George's County Homeless Services, the applicant.
I'll second it, but if you would accept a friendly amendment in terms of better perhaps lighting and some security.
That would be an additional recommendation.
Right, I'm asking, I'm asking the applicant.
No, you're asking me?
Yeah, if you'll accept it.
Yeah.
Right.
With regards to safety concerns, that's fine.
So it's been properly moved and seconded and I vote aye as well. The ayes have it. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you all very much.
This now concludes all items on today's agenda and the meeting is now adjourned.